Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Do you have a roll call, please?
Barkley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Rorden?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Benner?
Here.
Barton?
Crone?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
All right, next we have the invocation by Pastor Elizabeth Cummings.
Let us pray. Most holy and gracious God, we give you thanks for this day and for this city. We ask you to send your Holy Spirit to be among the members of our city council, the members that gather here this day. Guide their discussions, their deliberations, their conversations, and help them to do what is best for this city, doing all that in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have a special order of business. A Business Appreciation Month Proclamation.
Before we start, Pastor Cummings?
Yes?
Just wanted to say thank you for your service. I've heard that this is probably your last time with us. You're moving back east, so...
I am, yes.
Thank you very much for helping and for all you've done for the community.
Thank you. And thank you to our city and to your council. Just the fact that you have placed faith as a priority here in our city, I really appreciate. And so, yeah, my last Sunday was yesterday, and this is my last official clergy business as of tonight. So, thank you so much to everyone, and thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a special order of business. A Business Appreciation Month Proclamation. Whereas June has been designated as Business Appreciation Month for the last two decades by the Kansas Department of Commerce to recognize businesses across the state for the vitality important contributions they make to the well-being of our community. And whereas Hazel businesses provide essential employment opportunities to a diverse workforce, embrace innovative technologies, provide local tax revenues, and make other significant contributions to our community that promote educational opportunities for our children and economic well-being to our citizens. And whereas the City of Hazel is pleased to recognize the accomplishments of businesses and industries that reside in Hazel. And whereas Business Appreciation Month offers the citizens of the City of Hazel an opportunity to recognize city businesses for the essential role they play in increasing the quality of life of our citizens. Now therefore, I, Russ Kessler, Mayor of the City of Hazel, on behalf of council staff and residents, hereby proclaim June as Business Appreciation Month. Councilman Crone?
I make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented on Business Appreciation Month.
Second.
We have motioned a second to approve the Business Appreciation Month proclamation. Any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crone?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have the Park Recreation Month Proclamation. Designation as July as Park and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Hazel, Kansas. And whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. Whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the preservation of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, attraction, and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve quality of life of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to the development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the City of Hazel recognizes the benefit derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, be resolved by myself that July is recognized as Park Recreation Month in the City of Hazel, Kansas. Councilman Benner?
I make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
We have motioned a second to approve the Park Recreation Month proclamation. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crone?
Yes.
Thompson?
All right, next we have the presentation on approval of minutes. Eight minutes of May 9, 2022. Angie, did you have anything you wanted?
Yes, in the copy that was emailed out to you, I had missed a vote under the executive session. That first paragraph, I had forgot to put in the votes.
Councilman Walters?
Yeah, just a quick question on item 13. It said Councilman Barton stated citizens award fourth edition, one of the streets swept. Is that correct, or was that some, that's her district? Her ward, I don't, I didn't remember that.
The word's fourth edition is actually in Ward Two.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
It's confusing.
Councilman Crone?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as they were presented at our desk with the amendments made from the one that's online.
Second.
We have a motion a second to approve the minutes as amended. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Epstein.
Benner?
Epstein.
Crone?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next we have item one, citizens to be heard. First we have Ken Bell of the Hazel Community Library Director.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm appearing here tonight on behalf of the Friends of the Hazel Community Library. Next to me I have Clyde DeFauld, who is President of the Friends of the Library and also a member of the library board. We're seeking on behalf of the Friends of the Library your permission to conduct Hazel's 42nd Annual Citywide Garage Sale. As you know, our city is home to the nation's oldest and longest-running citywide sale. The Friends of the Library hope to continue with that tradition. So we're requesting your authorization to conduct that sale on August 13th and 14th, Saturday and Sunday, August 13th and 14th. Sell permits for the sale, and also to preclude the sale of any permits on Friday, the 12th of August, in advance of the citywide garage sale. Thank you.
Councilman Walters?
Yeah, I propose we approve the citywide garage sale as presented.
Second.
We have a motion a second. Any discussion? Councilman Barkley?
What do the sale of the permits, where does that money go to?
It goes to the Friends of the Library. The Friends of the Library spend the vast majority of their funds buying books for the library. For example, just this last month, they authorized $1,600 for children's books for the library in advance of our summer reading program.
All right.
All right, thank you. We have a motion a second. Need further discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crone?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, Greg Dury from Regarding ICT Loves Dutch's Greenhouse Special Event.
All right, you guys tonight. This is Megan. She's also doing this with me. I actually work at Dutch's Greenhouse. And for those of you who may be following our social media, my cousin, about 20 years ago he had cancer. He came back, found out he had a gene called Runets One gene. Not a lot of things are known about it. I'm actually still learning about it myself. But we want to have an event where we actually rented out all Riggs Park on July 24th, which is a Sunday, to have an event with plant vendors and just make it a big community event. Megan knows a lot more about it. That's why she's with me tonight, because she's done these events. She's probably done about four or five that I know of. I've been to three of them. And if I had to put anybody against her to run an event, I don't know if they could do one as good as her. So here's Megan.
Thank you, guys. My name is Megan Farrow. I'm here representing the local plant community in Wichita and the surrounding areas. As Greg mentioned, we put on several of these events. We just did one recently in Key Chai out north. So we'd like to switch it up this time and come down south. So, just a little bit about us, we are a Facebook-based community, which a lot of you may not know. I don't know if you're on Facebook, but a lot of us found each other during COVID. That's how Greg and I met, through Dutch's, and just kind of found our sanity in house plants online. So now that we have the opportunity to get together, this will be about our third event that we've executed in the last nine months. So what we'd like to do is, with the council and city's permission, we have rented out Riggs Park for that Sunday. Four to 10, we're looking at bringing about 40-plus vendors. That's plant vendors, local artists, makers of all kind, everything from your basic garden variety to high-end. In addition to food trucks, as well as some family fun, too. We want to make this an event for all ages, everybody in the community. So we have face painters out that we've worked with before. Greg has reached out here in Hazel to PD, FD, and EMTs as well. We'd love to bring anybody in from the Hazel community, just to make it fun for everybody and support everybody in this show. We are just a community of volunteers. We're about 6,000 strong between two groups that Greg and I help run on Facebook. And we all just volunteer our time to do this. There's about 40 of us that were the core that executed our event in Key Chai. We had about 5,000 people come through. So we just like to do something similar, but even better, down here in Hazel. You know, we've rented the park out with the city clerk. We've submitted our special event permit. We have our insurance secured already, copies as well to pass on to you guys. You know, we, from setup to breakdown, we all volunteer our time. We will bring in trash cans. We will walk the entire property. We just want to make this successful for an amazing community in Hazel. So I've already spoken to Tony Martinez. We do have a live band planned. We realize our constraints. It is a Sunday. We want to be respectful at times, the neighborhood, et cetera. Anticipating as many people as we are, we know there's some designated parking in the park. We know you guys rock it at the Fall Festival, so any insight you can give us as we prepare maps and prepare the crowd to come. You know, we just want to do whatever we can to support the city, be in compliance, and just make this a successful event for everybody. So we appreciate your time today so much. Anything else to say, Greg?
I don't. So we'd like to see if you guys would vote on it tonight. If you can, fine. If not, we understand. We just want to make sure, because we know that that's council meetings two weeks before the date, we're planning on doing this. And two weeks is not a lot of time to advertise, promote, and make it run successful like it should be.
Okay. And I think the city staff has already approved it. Is there any?
It's, we're just waiting for them to come to council to share with the council what the event is. And the application is approved at the staff level, department. We've looked at it already. And we're going to go ahead and approve it. We just wanted him to have a chance to come and present to council.
Right, good. So there is no other approval that you need for tonight?
No, we just want to come and introduce ourselves and just say thank you guys so much. We're just trying to be proactive. That way we can get our vendors prepared, promote, you know, collaborate with the City of Hazel. We'd love to build a relationship with your Chamber of Commerce or any local businesses that want to come out. We just like to support the community, whether you do plants or not, so.
We're glad you're here and glad you're putting it on. I know you said it's July 24th. Do you have hours for that?
Correct. 4:00 to 10:00 PM is our hours. We kind of have it staggered. We'll have vendors for a little while, dinner service, and then move into live entertainment, closing the night out at 10 o'clock, and then making sure the park is cleaned up and we get out of there so everybody can get home and go to bed.
I appreciate you coming down. Does council have any questions? Councilman Crone?
Make a suggestion. We do have a forum in our market on Saturdays. You might come down and hit people up.
Yes, we would love to do that. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Look forward to the event. All right, next, it's not on the agenda, but I'm going to allow Marsha Armstrong to speak instead of having her wait until the end of the meeting. Please go and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Marsha Armstrong. I live on North Twin Pines. I've lived in Hazel for 38 years. I want to thank the businesses on Broadway that actually put forth an effort and keep their property clean, keep their businesses maintained. And now I want to know why the city does not make the trashy businesses and property owners on Broadway clean them up. I called the county. The county said it is not their responsibility. They have not and are not preventing the City of Hazel from cleaning up Broadway. Is there a limit of complaints that you need? I made a complaint about being abused by two city employees, and I was informed that that wasn't enough complaints, that it didn't reach the level that the city set. I know y'all wanted to put an overlay on Hazel, on Broadway, but the truth was you just wanted to have power over the businesses. You promised sidewalks. You promised to clean up Broadway. You said that if anybody on Broadway, any company blew away, you would not allow them to build back because you wanted better businesses. You wanted dentist offices, doctor's offices. Well, I'm sure y'all remember Dr. Drug Dealer and his wife that allowed their patients to have total access to all the drugs they want, and their patients died. They killed their patients. I don't think that that is necessarily a better business. I haven't heard of anybody dying because they used the car wash. And that was one of the businesses you wouldn't allow to build. I feel that the moment you're elected to council and mayor, Broadway has become your responsibility. It's the responsibility of every person who works for the city. Why are you allowing one of the main roads into our city to remain trashy, filthy? What do we need to do? Any answers? What do you want the citizens to say and do to get you to put forth an effort to clean up Broadway? Do you have to take total control of the properties? That's what you wanted to do? I wish every citizen would call every councilman, the code enforcement office, the mayor, and have y'all listen and pay attention to what the citizens want. We want ward meetings. You cannot represent people you never meet, you never speak to. How can you know what we want, what we need? We definitely don't know what you're willing to do for us. Ward Two, half of Broadway's in your ward. Ward Three, the other half is in your ward. Why haven't y'all put forth the effort? Yeah, it's not like you just started today. A lot of you have been here a long time. You were a councilman before you were mayor. We need ward meetings posted on the water bill, time, date, and place. That way every household, every business is guaranteed that they have been notified. It's time to clean up Broadway. 38 years. How high a stack of complaints do you want? Do you need? You tell me right this minute, and by golly, I'll make sure that they're there.
No, we do take complaints and we send our code enforcement out, our code enforcement officer out.
38 years, they haven't done anything. It's still trashy. They're still allowed to do it. I've lived here 38 years. I live one block west of Broadway. Now, you can say they do it, but I don't see it. Citizens don't see it. The businesses on Broadway that do care would appreciate if y'all put forth an effort and make the nasties clean up their property. I don't think that's asking a lot. You spend a lot of time and money on Seneca and Meridian. We do exist east of Seneca. We do. There are businesses, homes, and families that do exist east of Seneca. We don't feel like anything has been done or you give a darn about us for the last, I don't know, 20, 30 years. Now that we have a new mayor, we're hoping that you will put forth an effort. You talked to me before and after your election. You said Broadway was important to clean up. I'm holding you to that.
Good. I appreciate you coming down and speaking your mind, and it's constantly on our mind. It's constantly something that we're looking at.
Constantly? 38 years, you've been constantly thinking about it? See, you keep telling me all these excuses and all these things that you're doing. Nothing's being done. Nothing's been done for 38 years. These are excuses. The citizens want reasons, logical reasons why. When I complained about it, I was told, "Well, you know, it's a county road." Well, now we know the county does not take responsibility. It's the city's responsibility. I expect to hear from you, Mr. Mayor, about the council meeting, about the ward meetings, and about what's going to be done about Broadway. I ask you to let me know when you first became there. I'm still waiting. I left a message last Monday to have you call me. I'm still waiting. So I don't believe any of the excuses anymore. 38 years of excuses is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have item two, approval of licenses and bonds. A refuse hauler's license renewal for best value services. Josh, would you like to speak about that?
Yeah, you know, I think we talked about this last meeting because we tabled it from the previous meeting. And I just wanted to kind of go over with you guys. I've done a review of the code, just to make sure everyone kind of understands sort of, you know, the way that the code contemplates these, and then kind of lay out a couple of options for you. You know, the way that the 7308 reads, and that's the one that our ordinance that talks about licensing, is it does not require council approval to issue a license for refuse hauler, okay? So, but we have another ordinance if council wants to revoke the permit, which is 7308. And it allows council, like we talked about at the last meeting, if you guys want to revoke the license for these folks, you can move forward and do that. So I think there's kind of three different options moving forward. The first is that there could be a motion to approve, which is not required by the ordinance, but it's just been something that the city's done as long as I've been here, is they've done before council. That motion could be passed, and it would be taken care of. The second option is someone can make a motion to revoke the license, okay, which would fit under the revocation ordinance, okay? And then we could vote on the revocation. The third option is because the refuse hauler's license is not required to be approved by council, someone could make a motion to postpone the matter indefinitely, which is, it just means we're going to remove it from the agenda in essence. So I just wanted to kind of talk to you guys about what I saw as the options, because we were kind of gridlocked a little bit the last council meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions, so.
So they've met everything they need to meet. So in other words, to get the license, there's nothing in there that says you have to have a certain amount of percentage of your customers that approve of your service or anything like that. They've met everything that all the other refuse haulers in Hazel have met to be licensed.
That's correct. And the ordinance just pretty much states that the city clerk will issue, you know, issue the license to them and then sets forth the requirements. My understanding is all the requirements have been met, so the clerk's ready to issue the license.
Councilman Crone?
I make a motion that we approve the refuse hauler license renewal for best value services at 1930.9 East Denny.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve the refuse hauler's license renewal for best value services. And second, is there any discussion? Councilman Walters?
Yes, last time I think it was Councilperson Barton that had the issue, somebody had said they had concerns about this. And so what we asked for, as I recall in the listed minutes, is that someone would at least tell us, are they meeting the needs? Not that we're going to police everybody, all the businesses, but it sounded like it was kind of significant. So it appears that we're kind of bypassing that request that the council asked for last time by either approving it, in which case, if they are not meeting the customers' needs, they have, what, another year, I guess, to continue to do so. I don't necessarily want to deny it, because I don't think I have the information to do so, nor would I necessarily want to unless it was grievous. And I don't think necessarily postponing would necessarily be a good path either. So I'm kind of at a quandary here, not knowing what exactly was done behind the scenes. I thought we would get some more information there. That's kind of what I was hoping for from the last time we met. So is that kind of swept under the table? And we're not going to get that information. We're just going to presume that they're good employers, employees, or whatever, refuse haulers, whatever. Is that kind of where? I guess I'm asking the council, is that kind of the idea we have? Or what, where are we headed other than just approving this? Am I the only one with this concern?
Councilman Crone?
No, I was going to, the reason I made the motion is because if they've met all the other things that all the other refuse license haulers have done to get a license, like I said last time, we're not the Better Business Bureau. It's up to people to have them hired. Because if we do it because there's 50 people that are mad and there's 300 other people that think they're doing a great job, all of a sudden those 300 people are out, too. That's why we have more than one trash hauler in town. People can change companies. And so I feel, honestly, I feel like if we would deny them this, we would be, we could get sued really easy because everybody else is picking up trash, have passed these things that they have presented, and they should be approved, too. So it's like, we're not the Better Business Bureau. We're just the council. And this is apparently even the last one that we will have to do, because we don't really even have to approve these. But I just think because we've had it in front of us, that we need to approve it and get it done. And just understanding that it's a free enterprise and people can drop them if they want to or keep them if they want to. If we just don't give them the license, then all of a sudden they can't pick up anybody. And that's not fair to the people that think they're doing a good job.
Because the city government doesn't go out, get a list of customers, and start asking the customers if they like them or not. I figure if they like them, they're staying with them. If they don't like them, they're changing companies.
Right. And it certainly makes sense, and I certainly agree we're not the Better Business Bureau. And that's why I said I would not vote to deny at this point. Because I don't know, I don't know what's going on. When somebody brings a question, a problem to the council, we should probably consider that, just like Ms. Armstrong brought this issue. We should consider it. It's not going to be immediate, but we should consider what's going on there and see if we can, if there's something we can do. Now maybe we, there's nothing we can do at this time. I feel like I'm, at least for me, this was kind of undermined, because I thought by the minutes that somebody would come and represent them, at least tell us what's going on, and at least give us some answer, rather than not giving us any answer at all. Just approve it or not approve it. So I'm concerned about that. I don't want to go back to the...
I know we requested them to come, I'm sure, because I think we did before both meetings, but it's not like we can make them come. And I know that, I don't even know how long that was. This is maybe 15 years ago. We were having some trouble with one of the other haulers in... We were having some trouble with one of the other haulers in town. And actually, me and one other council member voted not to approve that then, but we both did it knowing that it was going to pass because we knew that it needed to pass. But it was just to kind of send a message. And I got a belief that we've tabled this twice and he's been requested to come talk to us. He knows that there's an issue. But again, we can't make them come and talk to us. But I mean, like I said, I, just to kind of send a message, I voted on one, and I can't even remember what was going on or even which company it was, but I mean, I voted no on one of these before because of service. And so actually, it was because they were building the waste treatment plant off of Fifty-Fifth Street after we had asked them not to because that was in our area of influence.
So I don't necessarily want to put the onus on refuse haulers. Were they invited to the meeting or did the city decide not to invite them and just go this route?
Yes, they were invited.
They were invited, okay.
I left him a message. I did not speak to him.
I did. I did speak to Mr. Solomon, and I have spoken to him twice. He's very aware that he was asked to come to the meeting, but he just chose not to because he was not comfortable with coming and speaking before people, is what he told me. But I have visited with him and he was aware that he was asked to come twice and speak to the council about this situation.
Is there any indication of how, or yeah, how he's going to resolve these issues or even that he was wanting to?
The two times that I've spoken to him, he indicated to me that he had resolved all the issues. He's hired more help. He's bought new trucks. Apparently, from what he told me, the first time I talked to him, they had a truck catchfire. He had truck mechanical problems. They couldn't get parts. He couldn't get good help. You know, he would hire people, they wouldn't show up. Supposedly, so the last time I talked to him, all those issues had been resolved.
Okay, that's good. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Question, please.
Markley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next, item three, introduction of ordinances and resolutions. A, an ordinance vacating a portion of platted utility easement within block eighteen, block A, Timber Lane North Edition. You have Jonathan here to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Before you use the recommendation from the planning commission for the vacation request of five fifty North Caleb Street. The homeowner wishes to construct an ingrown pool and the current easement prevents this. The planning commission recommends, is to amend the legal description to vacate only the area of, needed for the pool. The staff report and minutes are before you in the packet. I can answer any questions you may have.
Councilman Crum?
Talks about making room for the pool. I wanted to make sure there was room in there for a fence to go around the pool.
I believe so.
Because the ordinance has to have a fence. You believe so or you know so?
I did not know of the owner wanting to put a fence there, but there is room for a fence.
You have to put a fence there.
No, if it's submitted such site plan to our office, which is reviewed and fencing is a requirement, so.
And have you seen, is there enough room there for them to put a fence?
Yeah, there should be, yeah.
Okay.
That's within the three-foot or four-foot part of the easement?
And they could also fence in the easement as well. They can, you know, have a gate or something like that is what code calls out, just like you may on your backside, have a fence there. They can do the same thing. The fence has to be fenced in though. The pool has to be fenced in, not the fence.
Councilman Walters?
Yeah, I just, one question. I noticed that in the information, you were initially opposed and now you're approved. What was the change in mind? What happened there?
So there was some uncleareness to the location exactly where the pool is sitting a lot. We have a sanitary sewer line that runs through there. So once the property owner did a survey, we feel comfortable with it. And we still have the clause that if for some reason the sanitary sewer is not exactly where we think it is, they have to pay to have it adjusted.
He's aware that he has to...
The initial application only had a sketch plan. It did not have the property surveyed. That's what we were waiting for. That's why I initially went out with just that and we had a complication, but that's what took so long.
Anybody like to make a motion to approve this? Councilman Benner?
I would make a motion that we approve the ordinance vacating a portion of platted utility easement within lot eighteen, block A of the Timber Lane North Edition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Markley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rarden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have item four, notices and communications, governing body announcements. Councilman Crum?
Yeah, I did want to mention that the national games for Special Olympics went on last week and Hayesville had three different citizens that got to participate. One of those citizens is a member of the Hayesville Hornets Special Olympics team, and that's Casey Hostetler. And she took fourth place in tennis and singles and she got a silver medal, scoring second, placing second in her doubles event. Just kind of wanted to mention that. And then for the library coming up tomorrow at ten a.m., there'll be a painting class. And also tomorrow at ten thirty is storytime, they'll be doing Hooray for Fish. Also tomorrow at three o'clock, they'll have a movie matinee of Ponyo. And then tomorrow at six p.m., Commissioner Lopez is having a citizens advisory group. And coming up on the fifteenth at ten a.m. will be a special performance of Randy's Music Jam. That's again at ten o'clock. And then at four o'clock on the fifteenth is also the Lego Club. On the sixteenth and the seventeenth, they'll be having pottery classes at ten a.m. They have two different classes. And on the twentieth and twenty-first, they have polymer classes. And you can call the library and say about signing up for those. They'll have a balloon animal activity on the sixteenth at three thirty. Storytime again on the twenty-first. And the matinee movie on the twenty-first will be Shark Tale. Then on the twenty-second, they'll have another special performance at ten o'clock, which is the Sean Rita Magic. And then, that one's in the wrong spot. Crochet class on the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth, leather work on the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth. They'll also be watching the movie Luca on June twenty-eighth. And on June thirtieth, they'll be having a deconstruction lab activity. That's at three o'clock after another art class, which at ten a.m. that day. If you're interested in the art classes, please give the library a call. Quilters still meet in the community room on Monday afternoons. And knitting and crochet groups meet on Tuesday afternoons. And the thirtieth, there will also be a Friends at the Library Board meeting at six o'clock. And that's what's going on at the library.
Thank you. Any other announcements? If not, for the senior center announcements, Tuesday, June fourteenth, Golden Plains Pharmacy presentation at ten thirty a.m. Wednesday, the fifteenth, commodities at one p.m. Thursday, June sixteenth, Bingo at twelve thirty p.m. Monday, June twentieth, Senior Center and Hayesville Hustle will be closed because of the holiday. Saturday, June twenty-fifth, breakfast at ten o'clock a.m. Let's see. WSU Well Rep Exercise Program returns this week, Tuesdays and Thursdays at ten thirty a.m. Through July. Hayesville, or see the hustle announcements. Hustle numbers for May of two thousand and twenty-two, one-way riders, two hundred and ninety-three, new registered riders for seven, compared to May of last year, one-way riders one twenty-eight and new registered riders for four. All right, next we have a thank you card from Brady Simmons. It's in your packet. Sedgwick County Fire Department, Station Thirty-four, monthly report. And we have the memo for regarding the non-payment penalty for water that the council requested. That's in your packet. All right, item five, old business. There is none. Item six, other business. A, performance public hearing regarding the CDBG number twenty-one PF zero zero nine, paving and draining improvements in the Sunset Fields Edition. You have Bill Mullen?
I'm here.
All right, welcome.
Well, this is a public hearing. And its basic purpose is if there's anybody from the public who wants to tell what they think of the project, if they liked, if they didn't like it. Kind of a brief review. The grant was awarded of March of last year with the idea that everything had to be finished by end of February of next year. And we actually finished it here ahead of time. The original budget was like nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. The actual budget came in about one point six million. The city made up the difference on that, which means you're more than overmatched. You've overmatched by about six hundred thousand dollars. There's one change in the project that happened after all the contracts were signed, and that is the, the state made an agreement with HUD on how they were going to do section three workers. And that change was, the new section three says at least twenty-five percent of all the hours worked on the project has to be done by section three workers. And a section three worker is somebody who makes eighty percent of the median family income or less for that county. And I think for Sedgwick County, it's like forty-two thousand five hundred for a single person, and you add another six thousand fifty dollars for each additional person after that. So the initial setup was that HUD wanted at least twenty-five percent of all the hours to go to section three workers. We came in at, I think it was eighty-something percent. I can't read without my glasses, but it was way above, so it's like eighty-six percent, I believe. The other thing is on the monitoring. Normally on these projects, as soon as you draw down the first draw of funds, the state monitor comes down to look at your project to see how you got it set up. Then when you're done, they come down for a second visit to make sure you did everything right and tell you whether or not you can start your closeout proceedings. Our project moved quick enough that we got both of those monitorings at the same time. They had no findings whatsoever. We asked for permission to start the closeout proceedings and they said yes. And that's how this meeting got scheduled. So all the paperwork for the closing out is done. We're just waiting for a letter from the state saying, "Send it to us." As soon as that happens, the mayor will be asked to sign his life away. Actually, it won't be that bad. But he's just signing several documents that then are sent in. The only holdout right now is that they do hold back some funds. Basically, it's part of the admin funds, ten percent of the admin funds till the project's closed out by them. In this case, that's two thousand dollars. You folks are paying me out of your own money. So the two thousand dollars that's held out would have been, would have gone to your contractor. The city has forwarded that money and gone ahead and paid it. And so when the two thousand dollars comes in from the state, the city will be reimbursed. So that's kind of where we are. Everything's done. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
So just so council knows, we did not need a council to vote to open the public hearings. This is a public hearing. Are there any questions in council? Councilman Crum?
So no, we did. We didn't have any change orders or anything come up. So everything went kind of like every, everything went to plan. We didn't find any bad...
It never goes to wrong.
Well, you know.
No, there's a couple of water main adjustments we had to do, relocations. You know, the last two, three weeks, we've had, what, thirteen, six inches, sixteen inches of rain. We had one issue in the back of one of the properties where the grass did get grown, so we had some wash out there. But at the end of the day, to sit here and say, after thirteen inches of rain in Sunset Fields, we really had no issues and no calls from homeowners over there? Successful project, I'd say.
It's like all the road beds and everything were good.
Yep.
Okay, good.
I don't know if you have any people here from Sunset Fields to talk.
So that's all we have.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
That closes the public hearing for this. All right, next, B, we have a presentation of the two thousand and twenty-one financial audit report. We have Teresa Seymour online here. Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Teresa Seymour. I am a director with Forvis, now formerly BKDA. We had a merger at the beginning of this month, so we're still getting used to the name. So we decided to, it was a merger of equals, as we call it, so we decided to change our name altogether. So we are now known as Forvis, so just to make you aware of that. And second thing I wanted to say was just to thank Angie and Will and all the staff that helped out with the audit this year. I thought it ran really smooth this year, so we really appreciate all their help on doing that. So I think you have hard copies in front of you, but I'm going to go over two items today. One is the financial statement and one is the management letter. So the first thing I'm going to go over is the financial statement. So I'll have you turn in about five pages to the page that says independent auditor's report. So this is the letter that we prepare that kind of describes the opinion and the audit overall. So if you've seen this from previous years, we did have a change in this report this year, so it does look a little different. The main thing is just it got, things got moved around a little bit. The sorting got changed to where the opinion's the first thing you see. And there's some information about going concerns and things like that, if that was an issue within the entity that you're auditing. So that information is added. So on that independent auditor's report, the first section there talks about an adverse and unmodified opinion. So if you remember from the past, you do have an adverse opinion on U.S. generally accepted accounting principles, which is GAAP. And that is just to say that these are not GAAP financial statements. It's a big red line for anybody that's reading this to know that that's not a GAAP financial statement. But you do have an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting, which is the basis that you do report under. So that's a clean or unmodified opinion, so that's the best you can get. So that's what we always like to see. And that's just to say that your financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. If you turn to the next page, you'll see a couple more paragraphs, one talking about management's responsibility and one talking about the auditor's responsibility. And this again is just to let everyone know that the management's responsibility is to prepare the financial statement and the auditor's responsibility is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether those financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatements and to form that opinion. So that's just giving you a little bit of information about responsibilities and things like that. So I'll have you turn again to page four. This is the main financial statement of the report. This is all the funds within the city, the beginning balances, the receipts and expenditures throughout the year, and then the ending balances. So this is just a really nice big snapshot of what happened throughout the year and a good way to see the changes as well. If you turn again, you'll see a composition of cash and the overall totals of everything. So that composition of cash just shows where all your money is sitting, those bank accounts and what kind of accounts they're sitting in. And then if you turn again, you'll see the notes to the financial statements. So this is the qualitative section of the financial statements, give you a little bit more of a background and understanding and not just the numbers of the financial statements. So a little bit more information to go there. I won't go through these all. They're all pretty standard and I don't think we had really too many that got updated this year, so they're what you've seen in the past. But I will have you turn to page fourteen on note twelve. And this one is the one labeled stewardship, compliance, and accountability. So while we do the audit of the city, we also audit the library. And this year, we found that kind of a good problem to have is they have quite a bit of money in their bank accounts, but they were over the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar FDIC limit. And they are also required to pledge that money if they're over that limit. So I think they were over by about nine thousand dollars. So we talked to Sarah at the city, so they're working on if they want to reduce that money, you know, if they want to have multiple banks or something like that to make sure that that's not an issue in the future. The next page is going to be your long-term debt. So this is a review or a summary of all of your debt that the city is holding right now. So if you wanted to look and see what, you know, geo-bonds you have, this is a good place to look there. And the page right after that is the maturity schedule, so you can see what upcoming payments are coming each year. The next page I'll talk about is page seventeen, and this is the summary of expenditures. This just shows every fund that has a required budget and the expenditures for the year and then tells you if you were over or under budget. So if that column on the far right there is negative or zero, you're under budget. So that's what we like to see. So as you can see, all your funds this year were at or under budget. And then the last thing I'll talk about on the financial statements is just the schedules. I'm not going to go through all these schedules. This is just every single fund that's within the city, the detail of each of that fund. So if there was a specific fund you wanted to look at... So if there was a specific fund you wanted to look at, maybe get a little more idea of what's going on with that fund, this is a really good place to look at that. So as far as the financial statements go, I'll set that aside and we'll talk about the management letter. Again, I think you have a copy of this in front of you. So the management letter is just a required communication between the auditor and those charged with governance, which in this case is the city council. So it's just us were required to communicate to you any significant matters that we found during the audit. So the first thing we like to communicate is where your significant accounting policies are, and you can find that in note one of the audited financial statement. We'd also talk about any alternative accounting treatments, any management judgments or accounting estimates, or any financial statement disclosures that we think are particularly sensitive. We did not have any management reportable in any of those. If we had any audit adjustments, which is adjustments that the auditors bring to the city, we would list them here as well, and we did not have any of those this year. So always like to see that. We also just state again that these again are Kansas regulatory basis financial statements, not GAAP statements on that auditor judgment about quality of accounting policies. And then the last thing is if there were any significant deficiency, material weaknesses in internal controls, anything that we thought needed to be brought to your attention in writing, it would be in this letter. We did not have any that we thought rose to that level this year. So again, something that Will and Angie and all your staff should be very proud of. So that's all I had for the management letter and that's all I had on my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Anybody has?
Do you may have any questions for Teresa? I don't see any. I do thank you. I thank Will and Angie and staff for doing another excellent job of keeping us out of trouble. Counsel McCrumb?
That's really all I wanted. I wanted to thank Angie and Will and also all the department heads. You guys do a great job of this and it's always good when we hear we have a good audit, which is pretty much what we always hear, just appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Teresa.
Thank you all.
Counsel McCrumb?
Ken, if you don't mind, are you guys working on that?
Actually, we got a resolution today. Sarah went and talked to Will about exactly what the situation was. We knew that the FDIC only ensures that account up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And it was a fairly temporary cash flow difficulty. But what we did was we went over to Community Bank, which is our sole bank, and had them get, I guess you'd call it a kind of surety bond, which assures any amount exceeding the FDIC's insurance is covered by a bond. And I got the confirmation today that they had secured that bond and everything was okay. Now, to be frank about it, that situation will get a little worse and it will have a little bit more money in there this next month, most of which goes into our capital outlay fund and we're planning on making some major capital outlays during the last half of this year. So it's a self-solving problem, if you want to call it a problem. But yeah, we got the confirmation today that bond is okay.
Okay, okay, thanks.
I mean, as long as I'm still here, I figure we can find out. Right, yeah. All right, thank you. All right, next C, consideration of agreement with G Works for data conversion.
Take this with me in case I need to call vote. So as part of our fun little software project, we do have to have data conversion. Unfortunately, that does come with a cost, so we do need to get approval from you so that we can get that data, so we can transfer all that and get our new software project converted over, so we can be using it by the end of the year. So I'm asking for approval of the twelve-thousand-four-dollar agreement to get that data pulled.
Counsel McCrumb?
Is this like the only company that does this or can we get bids or?
This is from our legacy software, so it has to come from them.
What would counsel like to do? Counsel McCrumb?
Go ahead and make a motion that we approve this software professional service agreement with G Works for data conversion for the amount of twelve-thousand-four-hundred-dollar.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next, we have consideration of bids for copy machines.
So I think our leases are up for five of our copy printers, scanners. So we did get three bids. They are included in the packet. The one I'm recommending for approval is from ImageQuest. It's for one thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and twenty-six cents per month. That includes the maintenance fee and a free printer.
Counsel McCrumb?
Angie, who do we have, who's our contract with right now?
Currently, it is with Conica Minolta.
Is, do we know anything about ImageQuest? I always get nervous when I see one bid that seems to be like it's quite a bit better than the rest of them.
Yes. We have a printer that is probably twenty years old that they currently maintain. And then we have a few other, about five other individual printers that they do a maintenance service on. So we have worked with them the last several years. I've only worked with them the last year and a half, but they've always been very prompt in getting back to us and getting their responses there. We haven't had any issues on that with them.
Are they Wichita locals?
What would counsel like to do? Counsel McCrumb?
Make a motion, we approve the contract with ImageQuest.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the copy lease with ImageQuest. ImageQuest. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have E, consideration of purchase and installation of engineered wood fiber.
Good evening. At the June park board meeting, committee members discussed one of the projects that they wanted to complete this year, and that was adding engineered wood fiber, the mulch to the playgrounds and the parks. We did receive a quote for that. We reviewed it. I did receive one late quote after the packet was ready. The price per cubic yard was less than what was submitted in the original packet. So I'm recommending that we contract with Cunningham Recreation for twenty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars sixty-eight cents for installation and delivery.
The one you received after the price was more.
More, I'm sorry. So the quote that is in the packet is the one that we're recommending.
Thank you. Counsel McCrumb?
There's enough funds in the sales tax right now to pay for that?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the engineered wood fiber contract with Cunningham Recreation for twenty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars sixty-eight cents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the engineered wood fiber contract with Cunningham Recreation. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next we have F, consideration of design agreement with PEC regarding River Forest Second Edition Infrastructure.
So this is the infrastructure that will go around and support the assisted living facility on the eastern half of the River Forest Second Edition. And PEC has in there one-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-fifty dollars. We've got this one slated to be paid for out of Capital Improvements Fund, Fund Thirty-Six. Any questions on this one?
Counsel McCrumb?
I make a motion that we approve the design agreement with PEC for River Forest Second Edition Infrastructure as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the design agreement with PEC for River Forest Second Edition Infrastructure. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of design agreement with PEC regarding Copper Trail Edition Infrastructure.
This is for the development on Grand that Will Harmon's putting together over there at Jane and Grand, and it's one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-five-hundred dollars. This will be paid for out of the temporary note money that was borrowed to finance the project. And it'll get paid back via specials.
Counsel McCrumb?
I make a motion that we approve the PEC design agreement for Copper Trail Edition Infrastructure as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the design agreement with PEC regarding Copper Trail Edition Infrastructure. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, H, we have consideration of design agreement with PEC regarding Seneca and Sixty-third Street Multi-Use Path.
So this is the project that we did receive, placement in the Wampos tip, which at this point, we're up to seventy percent federal funding for the project on construction, up to eighty percent, depending on if they get more money back in the tip from other projects that may have been out, come back lower than originally installed in the tip. That's a great word. And then the city does have to pay for a hundred percent of the design. So it's in here for one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. And the reason a multi-use path or a very large sidewalk is commensurate in price to the other projects we just looked at is because they have to provide the plans three different times to KDOT for review. They have to do an office check, field check, and then final check. So they have to do three times of work for us to get this project at seventy percent federal funding.
Counsel McCrumb?
So one of the questions that I have, because I was going to ask, I didn't know if PEC designed the one we had on Grand or not, but this is part of the Grand requirement, it has to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
It has to go through the whole KDOT design process and it's usually an extended period and higher cost.
Okay, well, that answered that question. I make a motion that we approve the design agreement with PEC for the Seneca and Sixty-third Street Multi-Use Path.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the design agreement with PEC regarding Seneca and Sixty-third Street Multi-Use Path. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, letter I, consideration of purchase of vacuum trailer.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. We have received quotes to purchase a vacuum trailer that will be used in the Water Department and assist the public works. A vacuum trailer uses something similar to a power washing wand and high vacuum tube to excavate. The equipment will be used to repair infrastructure and locating buried utilities without damaging them. Currently, we use a backhoe to dig all of our infrastructure. I'm seeking authorization to purchase the used diesel unit from Vermeer Great Plains in the amount of sixty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. This unit, we did demo last week. It has only five hundred hours and it has a five hundred hour or one-year warranty on it. I stand for any questions you may have.
Counsel McCrumb?
So this is a piece of equipment we've never had before?
We have one in the wastewater department, it's about twenty-five years plus. This one will be used mostly in the Water Department. The EPA has adopted a new lead and copper rule revision, so before the end of 2024, we will have to, what I call pothole or excavate every service line, every tap on the public side and the private side. So this will assist that as well as everyday tasks.
Okay, you're saying that it's kind of a limited window to get this and that's why you're going to get it now and then pay out of next year's budget?
Yeah, originally, we were actually looking to put in the next year's budget and then we started reaching out for budget estimates. They said if you want one, you can get it now, otherwise it'll be twelve to eighteen months potentially. And they actually have this in hand, on hand right now.
Is it the same one you guys demoed?
Counsel McCrumb?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the purchase of the Water Department vacuum trailer from the near Great Plains, a used diesel for sixty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have letter J, consideration of purchase of the pump trailer.
We've also received quotes to purchase a pump trailer that'll be utilized in the wastewater department. This pump will be used for emergency bypassing of the city's seven sanitary sewer lift stations. The pump currently in service is undersized and does not meet the pumping demands of the lift stations. I'm seeking authorization to purchase the pump trailer from Power Equipment Direct for forty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. This is a budgeted item and will be paid out of the wastewater contractual fund. Stand for any questions you may have.
Counsel? Counsel McCrumb?
I make a motion, we approve the budgeted item with Power Equipment Direct for forty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to purchase the pump trailer as presented. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have letter K, consideration of no fishing in Riggs Park for the week prior to July fourth, fishing derby.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. A fishing derby will be held in Riggs Pond on the Fourth of July again this year. For best results, for the fishing derby, we plan to stock the pond the week prior so that the fish can get acclimated to their environment. Therefore, I would like to request that no fishing be allowed in Riggs Pond June twenty-seventh through the fishing derby on July fourth.
Counsel McCrumb?
I make a motion that we approve the request to limit fishing, so there's no fishing from June twenty-seventh, like you said?
Yes.
Until the fishing derby begins on July fourth.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the no fishing of Riggs Park for the dates specified. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
All right, thanks. Thanks. That brings us to item seven, Department of Reports. A, Administrative Services. Will.
Okay, what I have for you tonight is basically an update on the budget process for next year's budget. We've been working on that. The department heads have given me the budgets for their departments. I put those all together in a working budget. So now we're trying to make sure that the budget that we present to you at the next council meeting is what it needs to be so we can continue to provide services for the residents, but also take care of employees. So a couple of the main items we're working on. As you guys are aware, the CPI for May to May was released on Friday of this last week, and it was an eight for six, eight-point-six percent increase in the CPI year over year. We've been working on a salary survey. I think we have mentioned that before. That's something that we worked on internally, and then we also took input from the League of Kansas Municipalities because they put out a salary survey to all the cities in the state. Not all of them actually gave information back, but a lot of them did. So we looked at a lot of the cities that are of our size and in the region, plus the cities in our county, plus the larger city Wichita, and Derby is also larger there. But we looked at those. We looked at the counties paying to get an idea of what we would need to do to adjust our pay chart. So when we looked through the salary survey, we took into account not only the cities around, but also any positions that we had that maybe we're already at or where other cities are, but looking at the CPI increase over the last year. So took both of those, and we're looking at those, seeing how we can incorporate that into the budget for two thousand and twenty-three. So that'll be something that we'll be bringing up next month when we go over the, at the council meeting, and go over the, basically, the normal budget presentation I give every year, so we can see those in more detail. So the pay chart revision was one large item that we've been working on within the budget process for next year. Next large item that we had is moving our commissioned police officers from the Capers retirement program to the KPNF retirement program. So we've looked at that. We've seen what that'll take within our budget to do that. So we're working on getting that in there. This will help with both the retention of our current commissioned police officers and recruitment of new police officers when new positions come open. To assist in getting that in the budget, we're looking at using a bit of the law enforcement fund. If you look at the budget numbers, it's Fund Twenty-four in the budget to pay for a portion of that increase, so it doesn't all just go against the general fund. So in addition to revising the pay chart and looking at KPNF instead of Capers for the commissioned police officers, a major task with the budget is making sure whatever changes we make, even if we can fit them in two thousand and twenty-three, are they sustainable? Can we fit them in the future budgets? So we're looking at carryover that we had coming into this year, estimated carryover going into next year, making sure we're not overspending next year to make sure that we can continue on with both of those items I've already mentioned that we're working on. And we're working on doing all of this with, of course, without increasing the mill rate. So those are the main, those are the main things we're working on. There are a lot of things in the budget that you'll see within the presentation at next council meeting. So I just wanted to let you guys know where we're at within working on the budget for next year. And if you have any questions right now, or if you think that that's a great way to go, or if you have concerns with what we're doing, I'd like to hear them now, and that'll give me time next few weeks when I'm working on the budget, so.
Well, I have, I have one. When do you plan on having this all put together and out? I mean, is council gonna get this like the Friday before, or are we gonna get it a little beforehand so that we have an opportunity? Because it's quite a bit to go through. It's quite a bit to, you know, just kind of go through and read. And if it's something that we get on a Friday evening, like we get our packets, then, I mean, that's a lot of stuff to digest in a couple of days. So my question was, is are you, without trying to push you guys and get in a big hurry, are we gonna have it like, say, at least, you know, five or six days ahead, if at all possible, so that we could have a chance to sit down and kind of go through this?
So the next council meeting, I believe, is on July eleventh. July fourth is on Monday, so it's the eleventh. So how about the Friday right prior to the Fourth of July, July first? Is that good?
That'll work for me.
All right.
I'll go back. You're not raising the middle of the, it's like the fifth year in a row.
Yeah, so we've had a lot of years where it's been a slight reduction, and last year, the legislature basically put out the revenue neutral rate, put out that little deal, which is kind of crazy. But last year, we reduced our mill rate by about two mils, and most of the other cities around just kept theirs flat. So last year, we did that, and this year, we're not, not looking to raise it at all, but we probably won't be able to lower it because of the things we're trying to do with the KPNF and adjusting the pay chart.
So like Phil said, you know, adjusting the pay chart. I mean, I feel like, you know, I'm sure you guys do too. Employees are the most valuable asset the city has. So I think it's very important that we keep the wages, you know, comparable to other cities. So you'll notice that in the budget when you receive it, and also KPNF for the Police Department to retain and keep, and to be able to recruit, you know, quality people.
I know last year when we did it, because of what the legislature done, we just raised the taxes on the new stuff. Were we doing that same practice this time, just the?
This year, I would be looking at taking the entirety of the increase in assessed valuation versus just the, just the new construction portion. But the mill rate would not go up. It would stay flat or be reduced by a little bit.
So if we do that, do we have to have a special meeting or anything?
We'll have to do the process to exceed the revenue neutral rate, which we did last year as well.
Okay, thanks.
I did a question because you were talking about the Capers and KPNF. What is the difference? Because I have my own opinion about Capers.
So the short, short version is Capers, when I was hired fourteen, fifteen years ago, is a defined benefit plan. Capers has changed since I was hired until now into a defined contribution plan. So basically, with defined benefit, you put in such and such an amount, such and such a percent, the employee puts in and the employer puts in. And then when you retire, you'll get the same amount every month until you die. Defined contribution is all based on how much you put in and the estimated rate of return that the state has. So they'll pay it out until all the money you put in, what their, what their interest is done. So you could run out of money with a defined contribution plan before you die. So the KPNF goes back to putting the police on that defined benefit plan. So that's a benefit to the officers above and beyond what the Capers is now.
Yeah, because Capers, in my opinion, ain't worth two cents.
It's, yeah, it's not as good as when we started.
Any other questions? Or Will? All right, thank you, Will. All right, next, City Clerk, Angie.
Before we meet again, we will have two days that city offices will be closed on June twentieth and observance of Juneteenth, and then again on July fourth for the Independence Day. As always, if there's any water emergencies, they can call five-two-nine, five-nine-one-two. Also, there's a lot of paperwork in front of you. If there's anything that you've already read or don't need, just leave it behind, and I will recycle that for you.
All right, thank you. Next, please, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, our visiting officer is Officer MPO JD Willis. He is assigned to, normally assigned to campus high schools, our School Resource Officer. During the summer, they don't work in the schools, obviously, so he's out here working afternoon shift now, and I think he'll be doing night shift pretty quick. It's a little bit cooler on night shift, so we don't really complain about night shift during the summer, or at least I never did. The other things we have is before our next meeting, we will have the Fourth of July, which is everybody's favorite time of year to blow things up. So we want to make sure that we're detonating fireworks where we buy them, so we would encourage everybody, if you're gonna buy your fireworks in Hayesville, shoot them in Hayesville. Don't bring stuff in from outside. We need to make sure that we're only shooting what we're buying here. Designated time for fireworks detonation is June twenty-seventh through July second from eight in the morning until ten-thirty PM. And then on July third and fourth, they can be detonated between eight AM and midnight on those two days. The other thing that we'll have is, and we'll put those out on the website, so that way you don't have to try to remember those, and they are already in the code. It's five-dash-eleven-oh-four is where that's actually at in the city code, which is already on our website, if you want to look it up. The other thing that we'll have is the nine-one-one non-emergency line, so that way if people have loud parties in their neighborhood, people being annoying with loud music, stuff like that, they want to call in. They're worried about calling nine-one-one, clogging up emergency lines. That's what that's for. So that will be available July first through fifth from six PM to three AM. And again, that's for loud parties, loud music, firework complaints after hours, things like that. You can call that number, and that number is two-nine-zero-ten-eleven. It's two-nine-zero-ten-eleven. And they will be able to get those taken care of and get them out to officers, so be able to get somebody out there to check on it as soon as they can. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counsel McCrum.
Chief, I got an email from somebody that's concerned about the things everybody's always concerned about, the, how many fireworks and how late we let them go and stuff like that. But this one included some pictures, and I don't even know what our ordinance would limit, or if we even have any limits on anything, because you can pretty much get whatever you want. But I know, I see people like have trailer stuff that, like, people would pay contracts for to come out and shoot off for cities and stuff. I'm curious if there are types of fireworks that aren't legal in the city, and if there's a way we have to go around to check to make sure that somebody didn't pour a bunch of stuff that they're not supposed to be shooting off. Or it's pretty much, I mean, I know in the past, it's kind of been a free-for-all because that's kind of the way a lot of Hayesvilleans like it. I would like to point out that in the past, the school district has always made it well-known that their parking lots are public property, and that you can go and shoot off fireworks from their parking lots. Actually, I think that at the administration building and sometimes on the, between junior high, HMS and Rex, they've even built trashcans out before. So the people could go shoot those in those areas. But I'm just curious, do we have anything that people aren't supposed to be shooting off? And is there any way we can try to make sure that what's being shot off is supposed to be being shot off?
Off the top of my head, the two things that you cannot shoot or detonate in the city of Hayesville would be bottle rockets and Chinese lanterns would be the two things that are not legal. I don't believe, I know bottle rockets for sure are not legal in Kansas at all, and I don't believe Chinese lanterns are either, but I could be, I could be wrong on that one. I know in the last few years, it caused some issues. The Chinese lanterns are the ones that they like to light, and it's like a little parachute, and it flies up in the air and then gets caught in a tree and catches a tree on fire. One of those. But those are probably the only things. And then any kind of commercial fireworks, any kind of commercial fireworks, which are certain-sized mortars and things like that, that wouldn't be, wouldn't be legal. And normally, our officers are watching for that kind of stuff as they're out, talking to people and driving around neighborhoods and things like that. The other thing that I would say is that they should only be detonated on someone's private property that they have permission to be there. None of our parks are that way. We don't want anybody detonating any kind of fireworks on our parks. The hack parking lot, those kind of things, those are all off limits. Those are, those are not areas where they can be shot off. Our apartment complexes, they call us every year and want us to keep an eye on the apartment complexes because there's a lot of people that live there, and they want to go out in the parking lot and shoot their fireworks, and they just can't because that's up to the apartment complex to decide that. Any, any place that wants to allow that to happen, they, they need to give people permission to be there. You can't just find a parking lot and decide, okay, hey, I want to go to Hayesville and find a parking lot and go shoot fireworks. Can't do that.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we are kind of keeping our eye out to make sure nobody's, like, bringing in stuff that really not supposed to be shooting off.
Right. Now, as far as how many, if you want to go tie twenty mortars together and put them in the back of your truck and drive around, that's the risk that you're gonna take. Assuming that your insurance company for your vehicle probably want to take a look at that, and I would have insurance for very long. But, I mean, you have to be careful that common sense should be coming into play there, but I know on the Fourth of July, a lot of people, they like to, they like to go out there and blow up their fireworks, and some people drink alcohol and do that, which those two don't mix. We should not do that. It's not good. You should always have adult supervision and those kind of things when we're doing that, to make sure we're not doing anything. And we ask everybody to please clean up after yourself. If your stuff goes in your neighbor's yard, go clean it up. Just be a good neighbor. The other thing there is just make sure that we're being mindful of our neighbors and making sure that we're not detonating fireworks. I mean, I think there's probably kids that live to go out there at eight oh one in the morning and go shoot fireworks because they can that week. So just be mindful of your neighbors and be a good neighbor. Clean up after yourself, and don't shoot them. Make sure you're paying attention to the times.
Is it pretty safe to assume that if you can buy it in a fireworks stand, then it's legal to shoot it?
And that, and that's what we tell everybody is if you buy it within the city of Hayesville, anything you buy at a fireworks stand in Hayesville is gonna be legal here. Because they, they do go through and do inspections like that. I know we have, our, our city inspector goes through and does some, some inspections there as far as making sure the fire extinguishers are there, things like that. I think County Fire Department also does the same thing. They kind of go through and look at what's being sold, those kind of thing. If anything sticks out to them, they'll, they'll call them, let us know, hey, they're not supposed to be doing that kind of thing. And we've gotten those calls in the past, but, and usually with the vendors, it's real easy. We just go back there, tell them, hey, you really shouldn't be doing that, and they, okay, and they get rid of it and put it away, and it's not, not an issue. Any questions?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have Public Works. Tony.
Century County will be holding its Household Hazardous Waste Event on June twenty-fifth from nine AM to one PM out front here at City Hall in the parking lot. Items that you can bring: paint, batteries, motor oil, antifreeze, household cleaners, fertilizers, pesticides, among other chemicals. They do ask you to stay in your vehicle, and they will unload the vehicle for you, and we'll have Public Works staff working this event with the county as well. So June twenty-fifth from nine to one.
Got all kinds of batteries you'll take?
Yep. You just can't bring explosives, ammunition, televisions, radioactive material, and things like that. And then also a citywide cleanup on June fourth. We had a hundred and thirty people participate at Public Works, so pretty good turnout.
Thank you. Next, we have Recreation. Rob.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On June twenty-eighth, we will have Kids' Park State in Riggs Park from eight AM until noon. We'll have our family camp out at the pool on June twenty-fifth, and then our Fourth of July celebration on July fourth. The Coid Sand Volleyball Tournament, starting at around seven-thirty AM, our Independence Day Parade has gotten moved up this year. It'll start at eight AM. Our OK Kids Fishing Derby will start at nine in Riggs Pond. Frog races are back this year, and we'll have those at ten AM at the Riggs Park Band Shell. We'll have free hot dogs in the park and water games at eleven, and then concert and fireworks in, in the evenings.
All right, thank you, Rob. All right, next, we have item eight, appointments. Appointments to the Senior Planning Committee for a one-year term. So in the packet, it has several individuals: David Straub, Jerry Straub, Ken Cooley, Ruth Miller, Bill McCary, and Mary Helen Jordan. Counsel McCrum.
Can I make a motion that we approve the appointments to the Senior Center Planning Committee, the six people as presented?
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the Senior Planning Committee for the one-year term. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Marden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, next, we have appointment to the Park Board for a two-year term. We have two individuals, Loretta Yoder and Ken Bell. Counsel McCrum.
I make a motion that we approve the appointments of Loretta Yoder and Ken Bell to the Park Board for two-year terms.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the Park Board members for a two-year term, as mentioned. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Marden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you. Item nine, we have off-agenda citizens to be heard. If there's anybody in the, out there that would like to speak. I see no one coming forward. Next, we have item ten, executive session. We have none scheduled. Item eleven, review of expenditures. A, summary of May expenditures. Counselperson Ewer.
Yes, I'd like to annu, to receive and file the month of May's expenditures.
Second.
We have motion and a second to file and receive, receive and file the May expenditures. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Marden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have item twelve, the consent agenda. Again, like previously, if, the entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda, which would be everything on the consent agenda. If there's something you want removed, you would have to state to, Counsel Benner.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Counsel McCrum.
Will, the one that just came to us tonight to talk about the thing July, July twenty-fourth or whatever, are they not gonna do?
No, they did not apply to have consumption on their, at their event. It's just a general special event.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion? Question, please.
Barkley.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Marden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Benner.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Next, we have item thirteen, council items. A, council concerns. Any council members have a concern? Seeing none. That's a first. Item B, council action request updates. Tony.
All right, got some updates here for Seventy Fifty Plaza Drive. The property is still not in compliance, and they're scheduled for a compliance check with municipal court tomorrow. Seventy-one oh six South Broadway. The property owner did not appear in court as ordered, so the court ordered a warrant. If they appear tomorrow, the court will cancel the warrant, and we cannot set a trial date until we meet with the attorney. One-twenty South Trail across the street probation period has ended. And also just kind of talk about some Broadway, I guess, cases recently. We have several in the area. We've done over six the last few months. We have more that we're continuing to work on. So I guess just want to communicate to you guys, there are issues out there. We are addressing them. At times, we do have property owners that do not want to cooperate. That definitely slows down the process. For the citizens and for anyone else, you guys pass this on. On the city's website, we have a citizen problem reporter. That's kind of a seamless way for citizens reporting the issues to us, and then it's directed to appropriate department. I can answer any questions if you have one, anything.
Counsel Benner.
Seventy-one oh six South Broadway, that's the old Hack property, right? So this has been curious to me for some time. It looks like, it looks like the merchandise or whatever, I guess, is stuff that he has there moves in and out. And it appears like recently they're moving the stuff off from the old tennis court and into that back lot. Is that what's going on over there? Or do we know?
So it has been relayed to him. He was supposed to have it behind the fence for storage items. They are supposed to be stored in a orderly manner on an all-weather surface. That doesn't appear to be happening. We've been working with them. They were supposed to put up a fence. They were supposed to put up screening. Trying to work with them to get this process to be understood. The last time we met, which would have been over two weeks ago, that was relayed again. They had put up the screening. She was going to relay it to the property owner. It has not been, they're not coming into compliance. We're trying to set a court date to go to trial.
Are we talking about screening? We're just talking about screening for the area that's right up adjacent to Broadway, I'm guessing.
No, I'm talking about the rear property where, yeah, where they can have items stored, but they need to be in a neat, orderly manner, not a salvage yard. That's, it's, they're not being compliant.
Okay.
But unfortunately, we do, trying to give due process, trying to go to court, and trying to get a trial date set. They didn't show up last week. You know, every time we meet, you know, they want to meet in thirty days. I'm like, no, we're meeting again in two weeks. I want to see progress. It's a slow process once it goes to this state. It's a slow process once it goes to this state.
But I'm, I'm not defending them in any way. I'm just curious about what's going on over there. Were we unaware of the nature of their business when we sold them the property? Somewhat?
Somewhat unaware of what it was going to turn into, yeah, for sure.
I, I...
Because it wasn't supposed to be...
Is it some kind of, it's some kind of salvage business, I guess, right?
It's an auction.
It's an auction house. So it's got violations for both the code enforcement nuisance side and zoning, so...
It's like typically, we're dealing with either commercial or residential. A lot of times, it's us just educating the person that, hey, there is a city code and you're not allowed to have this. Most people, nine out of 10 times, will say, oh, I didn't know. I'll take care of it. If somebody has a property that's really a mess, as long as we're continuing to make progress, like Georgie said, and they hit the deadlines that they tell us, we'll work with them. But as soon as somebody stops working with them or with us, we send them to municipal court if they're local. Then we're at the judge's discretion of timing and things like that. You know, the last year, we've had a couple of properties that don't want to work towards the same goal as us, so...
And just like Tony said, I know I have at least four properties that I'm trying to work on that have zoning issues plus nuisance issues that aren't on here.
And I would admit, you know, sometimes, you know, the properties on Broadway, they will come into compliance and then shortly after go back out of compliance and keep playing this, what I call a game with us, you know? And that's kind of the game that we're dealt and it's a game that we'll continue to play.
This doesn't help with the conversations about cleaning up Broadway. I live on Broadway, I have for 71 years, and I hate that term. Because that means, that's so ambiguous what cleaning up means. Does that mean, that means picking up trash to some people. To other people, it means I don't want to see that old 1958 building there anymore. I want something shiny and new like I see over in Maine and everything in between. And those are hard discussions to have. I know you all know that.
Councilman Crump?
Is there anything we can do to increase something in an ordinance? So the penalties increase each, because like when somebody comes into compliance and then they turn around and they're not in compliance, again, we have to start over. Is there something we can do so that we can start at a different point? If it's not their first one, is there something we can do to increase fines?
So typically, what helps us at the repeat offender, one, we do know that zoning violations are the more costly, fine-wise. So we try to do a good job, not that we do every time, but if we have a nuisance case and a zoning case, we try to go together, send one letter together, tell them what the violations are. But the zoning fines are more, as we had in the past, are much more costly. So we know that repeat offenders on code enforcement, we usually just try to communicate with the prosecutor, hey, it's repeat offender. If it makes it to court, we made every effort to get them to come into compliance. If it's in court, they premise told us, no, thank you, leave us alone.
Is there something we can change the timeline though, when they're a repeat offender?
So from my opinion, there are some folks that don't care. And we've dealt with some of those folks that would rather go spend a weekend in jail than come into compliance. So the question is, you know, would doubling the fine be a motivating factor? If it's going to cost them thousands of dollars to clean up the property? I, I think it's individual motivation, you know, whether $250 or $500 or $1,000 or spending the weekend, you know what I mean? I just think everybody's a little different on their pain threshold on that stuff. But the concern we always have too is, you know, we hate to have a huge fine for, you know, a small-time offender and those two not, not fit together. So right now, it's kind of within the court's discretion, within a range of fines and jail times, whether it's nuisance or zoning, how long there's been a problem, whether it's repeat offender. You know, those are all things that the court, you know, the judge takes into account when they, you know, do the sentencing.
Well, let's say like right now, I don't even know what it is, but they would have 60 days to clean up something that was code. And so they come in compliance and then two weeks later, they have the same issue or even a different issue. Do we still have to give them 60 days? Or is there something we can go on the ordinance to say, you were already aware of this because you were already penalized for it, so we're not going to give you 60 days. We're going to give you two weeks, so...
Yeah, so by, by city code, it states if we send one letter about a violation, that letter is good for the whole year. Another recourse that we have is if we had a notice appear in municipal court, that is for a very specific day. If we have a repeat offender, let's say Georgie doesn't want to mow the grass, I can send her a notice to appear for today. And next time, I can send it every day of the week. I can send it on Monday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So those are all individual cases as well, which paperwork, city staff time. We've never had to do that, but that's the way to do it if we wanted to.
And I can tell you from being in court, the fine, it's jail time that makes a difference. Jail time is the only thing that gets something done.
I also don't want to overreact just because a small amount of people, if that makes sense, you know?
Yeah, I, I understand. I was just, I was just wanting to make sure somebody wasn't getting 60 days all the time.
Starting the clock a little bit.
Yeah, just, because I know that was a problem years ago. We had people that were doing that. I just wanted to make sure that we rectified that problem. It sounds like if we send one letter and we tell them it's good for the year, then that problem's kind of taken care of, so...
Didn't we change something like that last year?
It's been like that for a while.
With regard to jail time?
Yeah, we, we did add jail time in there. I can't remember if it was last year or the year before.
It was type C, class C?
So, so the property on Broadway that seems to be the big eyes or the fenced-in area, is there something in our ordinance that we can't make him put like some kind of a barrier or something along the fence or something? So when people are driving down Broadway, they don't see all the...
Trash.
Trash that he's got in the fenced-in area?
It was discussed with his attorney that those items needed to be moved. I am trying to go to trial.
Right.
They didn't show up.
Oh, you didn't? I'm, I'm not, no, I'm not saying you're not doing the job.
It's frustrating.
Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah, oh, yeah, we already went through this, you know? So I understand that.
Unfortunately, like Josh stated, that there's just some people that don't want to cooperate. This is probably going to be one of them.
Well, I was just thinking, if, you know, if it's, you know, if you, it's either jail time or you put, I don't know what they call that stuff, the slats that go down in the chain-linked fence that kind of blocks the barrier. You know? I mean, is there something in our ordinance that says that we can't make them put that up?
I think it's in certain zoning districts.
Yeah, I mean...
Which I don't think this one does require it.